Good evening, welcome. I'd like to call to order the ordinance committee meeting this evening. We have two council orders before us. Council Order 2016-248, this order authorizes the MBTA to re-arrive in North Quincy Transportation. 2016-249, ordinance amending Title 17 to add new section, Section 8.5, entitled Transit Oriented Districts. Before we get going to the housekeeping matters, Madam Chairman, please call and roll.
Counselor Cannon.
Present.
Counselor Foll.
Present.
Counselor Vaughn.
Present.
Counselor Press.
Present.
Counselor Hayes.
Present.
Counselor Lee.
Present.
Counselor Tomlinson.
President.
And if you could please read the meeting law. Here we go. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting when they transmit the meeting through any media. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed to be non permissible. This is the first order relative to authorizing the MBTA to release the air rights. This matter we are going to be into committing. The administration is preparing, in partnership with the opponent, to give us a full presentation at a future meeting. So, Council Order 2016-248 is staying in committee and will be scheduled to a date to be determined. With that, Council Order 2016-249, and ordinance amending Title 17 to add a new section, Section 8.5, entitled Transit Oriented Districts. We have before us an amendment based on the recommendation of the planning board to reduce the open lot size from five acres to one acre. That has been presented before us. Someone here from the planning department will be to speak on that matter. Mr. Stevens from the planning department, for you.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Rob Stevens, Principal Planner with City of Quincy. I appeared here before you when this matter opened up. I'm here to answer any further questions. I don't believe we've gotten everyone's questions the other night. I'm also here with Jeff Facher from Boston Survey Group, who also is assisting the department in creating design guidelines, which I believe every councilor at this point has a copy of those draft design guidelines. If this measure goes forward, those guidelines will be used by the planning board in reviewing future TOD projects.
We had started with a motion left to table. Counselor Lee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Stevens. I had a question for you about those guidelines. Currently, they are draft guidelines and so have not been finalized yet.
Correct.
Can you just give me an idea of when they will be finalized and what's the process to finalize? Is it planning board going to be coming from the council party, or are they going from the public party? What's the process to finalize those guidelines and what do you see those guidelines as?
Correct. So, the planning board or any special permitting authority in our zoning code has the ability to adopt rules and regulations and guidelines in their role as permitting authorities. So, the planning board has adopted guidelines in the past. They do it within their own structure of their meetings. So, that would be, you know, potentially, once this TOD zoning amendment, if it is approved, the next or the following meeting after that, the planning board could adopt final versions of those guidelines.
Mr. Walker for the administration.
Through you, Madam Chairman, just to follow up on what Rob said. There has been some discussion at the previous meeting and today offline relative to public import on the design guidelines. Now, there's something the administration may have office certainly able to before the planning board formally adopts those design guidelines. I want to mention that the design guidelines, they're in draft form because it's the planning department's role to develop those. Essentially, this ordinance points to the existence of design guidelines and says those design guidelines shall be used. It's not a new ordinance, but the design guidelines themselves are not within the ordinance. So, there's certainly a discussion that can be had if this zoning ordinance is adopted that to further robust discussion at planning board level relative to those design guidelines. And some administration is certainly able.
Counselor Cannon.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So, through you to the mayor's office of the administration. So, shouldn't the planning board approve the final document for them, for us to approve?
Not necessarily, Counselor. I think that, again, it's in the realm of rules and regulations. You are, in this legislation, you are essentially saying that we want to adopt an ordinance that includes design guidelines. But those design guidelines are the purview of the planning department. The planning department's model, if the ordinance is approved, could go and develop. We produced a draft. We think that that draft is going to be pretty close. It was an effort to get the council as far at the speed as we could on those. The planning board could change the design guidelines, even if they have a final document before you, before you vote on the ordinance. They can then turn, those are their rules and regulations, they could change those design guidelines. Because the ordinance itself points to using design guidelines, it does not point to what those design guidelines are. It's the same process that we use for downtown, whereas the design guidelines are formulated by the planning department. The ordinance for downtown refers to design guidelines, and those design guidelines are formulated by the planning department.
So, was there a process before by which the planning board has set forth those design guidelines, the planning department, and then the planning board approved them, and then the city council approved it, and that document that points to said planning guidelines?
We're going back some years now. I don't recall the exact specifics of which chicken and which egg came. If the design guidelines were approved before the final URDP or the base URDP was approved, I'm not sure exactly how that went. But again, it wouldn't be, it's not a, it's not fluid. It's not, these are the design guidelines, and that's it. It's something that the planning board can does update on a regular basis. They can, they can change them on a regular basis. It's not something that is totally set in stone regardless of the ordinance.
Okay. So, you want us to approve any complete document that goes along with another document?
No. No. The incomplete, the draft guidelines are for your review. We're not asking you to approve the draft guidelines. We're not asking you to approve design guidelines at all. We're asking you to approve the use of design guidelines. Whatever those design guidelines may be, as drawn up by the professionals, the planners, and the agency that's in charge of planning and developing in the city. So, we're not asking you to approve a draft document. We're not asking you to approve any document other than the ordinance that's before you.
So, what enforces that anyone that needs to abide by those draft guidelines have to follow them? If they can just be, you know, changed through a document? Where is it stated anywhere, I guess, to the planning department or the planning board? What governs the existence of, you know, say, this document that is apparently never going to be complete, you know, we have to follow these certain guidelines, but to what, who enforces that?
The planning department.
The planning department.
By way analogy, if I put, we as a policy stated that we wanted to adopt, we went through a lot of area off-lane jobs. We then let it go to the parks and recreation board to determine what the rules are. We're going to get into the nitty-gritty details of the rules, for example. That's something they're going to say off-site with the executive office function. When we did downtown, we did a lot of review about this little field, but put it into the planning departments for the everyday execution. So, that's the way I looked at this was, here's our downtown design guidelines. We want to walk it off of that. We understood and put a lot of effort into creating what these design guidelines should be for the downtown area. The way I looked at it was, similar with the design guidelines, it gets adopted, but we haven't seen them amending, you know, if it's, here's the signage, here's the little field cohesiveness versus each project is going to be changing the design guidelines. That was the way I understood it.
Mr. Patz, Mr. Stevens.
Yeah, I'd like to have a little bit of information to this discussion. Back in 2005, Quincy Center zoning ordinance was adopted by this body. It was almost a year afterwards that the planning board adopted Quincy Center design guidelines. So, in, oh, in 2005, that council body approved the zoning change without seeing any guidelines whatsoever. They were developed afterwards, and it is a planning board process. And I think it's important to know that this body, as opposed to general public, can suggest changes or areas of focus in these design guidelines. We have, we have categorized that one. Again, we have Jeff Facher here from DSC, who hired an urban design consultant to assist the city in that development. But the guidelines themselves are what the planning board views. It's their document as the special permitting authority, as articulated in zoning ordinance. And, you know, we felt it was important to give this body a draft, you know, we didn't want to give it final version because we figured there wouldn't be dialogue. There would be areas of focus as this legislation or as this zoning change has moved forward. And as it pertains to the Quincy Center design guidelines, those have been amended twice. So, this is a living document. If there's areas we think we need more focus, or I felt less focus, you know, those could be amended by the planning board through a public process where they're holding a meeting during their public meetings to do that and to give the public an opportunity to comment on any of those changes.
Mr. Patz.
If I can, I just don't want to reinforce and point out that for us to come before this council, the design guidelines, they are, as I said before, we developed using the downtown design guideline. It'd be somewhat, it was on to us to give you the final document for you to look at. It's a reason the guidelines were distributed. Should you see something in the guidelines, this day or thing, or had you seen something that you wanted some clarification, you'd like to change the way the wording went, that was the idea, we were bringing the design guideline before this body so that there's an opportunity for dialogue if there's something, as Mr. Stevens said, this is a living document and can't be amended. But we thought by putting it before you as a document, we're in fact reinforcing the thought that should there be something specific, as you know, these design guidelines were presented to you, recognizing that there was a uniqueness of the T stations that are involved in this process, that there may be some individual thoughts that the council would have about different pieces within those design guidelines that may be germane to the discussion. Thus, the reason we put it through as a document. And again, is the planning board comfortable with this coming set of design guidelines? Yes, they are. They are absolutely open to your thoughts. And if there is anybody that has a question, again, as to how particular guideline that is in that, that package, what is based on, what the consistency was, again, the author of those guidelines, the official of the company, and that's, again, what we wanted to make sure is we had, like, yeah, that if there was something specific to the guidelines before you, that we got to go back and say, well, so far, so good, but through the council was that we're just concerned that we could share with this department.
Thanks, Jim.
Counselor. Counselor Vaughn.
Thank you, Jim, for us. Chairwoman, I'm just getting back to a little bit of clarification on this 2016-249. Were we just talking about the North Quincy T station, or the Wallaston and Quincy Adams T station off this document? Or we just talked, we just talked to one, or we talked to all three?
Through you, my question to the administration.
Through you, Madam Chairman, Chairwoman, to the council. There's been some discussion the last couple of weeks about this very subject, Council. It's the mayor's and administration's desire to persuade one of the three, your colleagues or yourself, to make a motion to remove both of Wallaston and Quincy Adams from the language of this ordinance. The reason being, Wallaston specifically, as we discussed at the last meeting, Wallaston needs more than TOD zoning. Wallaston probably needs, in fact, I think we know it needs, an urban redevelopment district that encompasses the whole of Wallaston Center. So, based on some discussions with a few members of the body, we decided that it was best to remove Wallaston for the time being with the expectation that within calendar 2017, the mayor and the planning department will be before this body with the full URDP or plan thereof that makes sense for all of Wallaston Center. There was a good point that was raised about looking at Wallaston Center holistically. And when that decision was made, the same determination was made at Quincy Adams, that there may be some different things that work differently for Quincy Adams, and at this point, to just go forward with the North Quincy T station. So, obviously, that's up to the body to determine the formal amendment, but that was something that we were not prepared to adopt today.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Just to take a step back and resume the conversation from the last meeting, basically, under 8.5.1 Purpose, number six, to improve traffic access and circulation, what might that, can you elaborate a little bit on what that's going to be?
I can, because this is a zoning ordinance that is trying to speak to any future developers that come forward. So, we want that future developers to improve traffic access.
So, it's going to be on the developer? The developers that are involved is going to relate to this?
Well, this is one of the, by, the zoning ordinance is the way for the entire city to set expectations for any developer. So, specifically with this TOD open lane district, knowing that you've got intermodal areas where you get buses, you have pedestrians, bicyclists. One of the goals that any developer developing on any of the T stations should have is to address traffic access and circulation. I think this building, this, this project right here downtown, it's, it's not, traffic didn't go away, but I feel a little bit safer pulling into the T station driveway right here in Quincy Center now that there's a signalized light and, you know, pedestrian cross signals, you know, whereas before, it was one crosswalk and it took your life into your own hands. I think that's the intent of that goal, number six. For any future developers on the T stations, we expect them to look, analyze, and propose solutions to addressing the traffic access and circulation.
The reason why I asked that question was, public people, they want to know, if you're going to, we're going to approve this in a nutshell, what are you going to do to mitigate some of that traffic concerns for, you know, six to eight hundred four units mixed use? There's also another section, 8.5.4, which is off-street parking, number seven, shared parking. I know this is going to be the developers' court, but I just want you to elaborate a little bit. A lot of people watch them, a lot of people are listening or getting information about this. It doesn't have this document from, we do elaborate a little bit about that, what it really just means on paper.
Yep. So, shared parking is contemplated, contemplated in this zoning open lane district, similar, again, to our strategy deployed in Quincy Center, taking the Hancock Lot, for example, a surface parking lot, underutilized land use for urban area. So, the idea is to invest in structured parking, and that is put on a smaller footprint, and it allows for development areas. So, I do believe the North Quincy Development Team, that public meeting last week, so some folks kind of got a sense of that proposal, and their proposal is to construct, I think, up to 1,700 new parking spaces at North Quincy, or most of it in structured parking. That would be shielded with, you know, private, you know, uses around that parking. So, we feel specifically on these T station sites, we're dealing with a number of different client tells for that parking. In the case of North Quincy, I believe they have to replace all of the public parking that's there now or fairly close for the commuters that are driving to that station and get onto the train and into town. When those folks come home, that parking lot's fairly empty, you know, and a lot of times overnight, many open spaces. So, the shared parking, as it's envisioned in this TOD district, is if there's overfilled parking needs with the private development, particularly residential, that there's the opportunity for them to just go into the area, go into the commuters, and park overnight. But allow that parking overnight, allow that, we share it at that one site. So, that's my thoughts on the shared parking.
Maybe you can answer this, Mr. Patz, maybe the mayor's representative. What is the major pros of having this document move forward tonight? What are the pros? What are the biggest things why we, it's got to come through this council, you want to approve to move forward? What is the main ingredients behind it?
The main ingredients for any type of zoning change is to promote high-quality development in our city. We're, we're in a situation right now where, you know, not only just at the T stations, you know, we in the, in the planning department have, have looked at over 2,500 units in housing, we've assisted the planning board in this review process. There is development interest in Quincy, and that example is with the Bezuto Atlanta team that is the volunteer for the RST for the MBTA station. They're coming forward with plans to develop that station. So, adopting this zoning district sets the city's expectations for quality development we'd like to see of that site. It clarifies some of our zoning, underlying business C on a development of the size, and it coordinates the permitting through the planning board. Right now, this, this site is zone business C, and the city has, the way the zoning rates now, the city has both the zoning board and the planning board reviewing the same project. So, this Streamline Act put the review with the planning department. We're geared up to do the full site planning review. Zoning board typically, you know, issues relief on certain issues. It's not that they can't look at the whole thing, but the planning board is really the agency that's done the site planning review. We have an act of, act of independent engineering peer review that reviews just about every project that comes for us. That's been implemented since 2008. So, we have the professional independent engineers that we hire at the developers' expense to peer review every project that comes through. You know, that, that's really sort of the emphasis right now is, this is a real project, and it's coming forward, and it's best to get, I think, this TOD zoning in place so we can handle that, review that, and manage that in comprehensive way.
So, going from zone C to a mixed use, without this, there's no mixed use involved? Is that correct?
No, you, you can still do mixed use, but again, you're, you're going through multiple boards, and, and that is not clear, I think, to the development community, you know, what would be required for, for each board. So, we're looking to identify the planning board as, as the one special permitting authority. Now, in doing so, you know, we started this discussion prior to you, was with the design guidelines. We'll implement those design guidelines, and, you know, the benefit of getting that is the developers now can follow our expectations laid out in the design guidelines as far as access, you know, filthy mass and the sight lines and so on and so forth.
Last question. The, the widening of the East Quanum, West Quanum Street in front of North Quincy High School, if that wasn't in place, would this be in front of us tonight? I don't know if you can answer that question, maybe else, but, I mean, traffic, I'll be very honest with you, looking at the simple fact that, and I know this is planning, I know we're going a little ahead with the development, this in a nutshell is going to, you know, allow the development to kind of happen, and they're presenting with the development as well. But for some of the people that live in Squanum that are trying to get onto the highway in the morning, and I have to talk about traffic concerns, because traffic concerns in part remain to increase, and we're hearing about the city on a constant basis. Now, we're developing at a rate where we have to keep up with our infrastructure improvements. People that are coming to have Squanum in the morning, and you get on the highway to go to Boston, you either could take a right there and into Shore Drive, and a lot of people are telling me that they don't want to take a right because they're sitting in traffic that's not moving. They'd rather go straight. Now, if you go straight on East Quanum Street to get to West Quanum Street, you're going to run right into North Quincy High School, and that's where we are right here, we're running right into the MBTA, North Quincy T Station, where this development's going to happen. Now, you can either take a right on Hancock Street, go on that way, or you can continuously go down a little bit more, get on, whatever. Now, you take your pick. You want to go left, you want to go right. You want to go on the parkway, go that way, or you want to go and try to fight it out with it. Okay? Now, you have another direction, you're going to go on to where President's Golf Course is and kind of go into Milton. There's always so many ways you can get on the highway to get to Boston. A lot of the concerns of the people, a lot of the concerns of the citizens of the city is that morning commute, I agree, and that's what I'm hearing on my end, you know, development happens. How do we, and that's why I asked you this question beforehand, before we get to the developer, they may say, I don't know, so, I mean, the only thing I can think of is off the custom, is a, is a big highway system that kind of goes above Hancock Street and loops around that kind of mitigates traffic to kind of keep flowing on the back end of Hancock, Hancock, but you're, you're up in the air somewhere, you're going to loop to move. Other than that, you're, you're in a gridlock. I mean, that's the only thing I can think of, and that has to cost, you know, Los Angeles style type of highway. It's, it's got to cost a huge amount of money. So, I, I don't know what more traffic flow and circulation we can do for that area. Would you, would you happen to have any type of solutions, I mean, at all?
I, I don't have the magic answer, but what I do know is, is the size of this project proposed by the Bezuto Atlanta team requires an equal requirement. So, they need to prepare comprehensive traffic sense and submit that for state permit review prior to that even getting to our level and local review. So, I do appreciate that on some of these larger projects, you know, they do have those environmental impact reports they need to file, and they have to deal with state permitting, they need to see that follow. So, I think that's a key first step for anything that comes forward in North Quincy. Is the city's going to be a beneficiary of that initial review by the state highway department?
You don't have to be a traffic expert, or a traffic engineer, or a traffic study person to understand. There's only so many ways you can go down those roads. There's only so many ways, and then it filters into the back streets and the cut-through streets, and I just want to make sure that there's something kind of in place, and hey, listen, how do we get the traffic flow, the circulation, and all these other things on top of the parking situation over there? How do we keep this all together for the balance of doing development in our city? Not to mention that there's development on the other side of the city or right outside here. There's going to be more development at Wallaston, you know, T station, we haven't even got there yet. I know on the other end of Quincy Adams is going to be worked up. So, putting all these vehicles onto an area, and I see the biggest concern is that morning commute, because on the night commute, I've been hearing from people that will stay an extra hour, will leave 30 minutes early, but in the morning, it's hot, there's only so many times a day. Even most people do their work at 7:00, 7:30, 8:00. Sometimes you push up to 9:00. Only a, like, a two-hour gap in there. But just a step further, if I could ask the administration, anybody else, and this is another thing, is, is there any more development on the ferry service? I know we've collected some data. Do we have anything at this point that the ferry service is going to be in a permanent situation?
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Through you, Madam Chairman. Yes, Counselor. The mayor met with Secretary of Transportation, Secretary Paul McInnesco, that's probably one of them I'm going to go now, to talk about, the name of all the stations in Quincy, what's going to be happening, what they have planned, what the city has planned, and how we put that together in a, in a way that makes sense so they can get all the work they need to get done, that has the least amount of impact on commuters as possible. And one of the discussions was the permanency potential of a ferry service from Marina Bay. There's nothing finalized at this point, but I think she heard the mayor here and folks in this body loud and clear about what this state has planned for these stations, that there needs to be coordination with the city, and there needs to be an extra effort with the city to make sure that disruption is minimized. And keep in mind, when we talk about these transit-oriented developments, this is what we're talking about in the end, is that this is money that the state will get and will write back into the system. Everyone knows the T has some serious issues. If this body, the planning authority, or whoever it is, the permitting authority, at the appropriate time, when questions are answered and the discussion is... the appropriate time, and questions are answered, and the discussion is being robust, decides that this is the appropriate project, you're talking about a long-term lease that is in the $200 million range, $200 million over the life of that. And you're going to see projects like that throughout the T system, and they're going to use that money, and they're going to put it back into the system. And that is a huge, huge piece, this is a huge piece while we're trying to push forward with this zoning change, that gets us into the process, that gets us to have those traffic studies, that gets us to have robust peer review, that gets us to have folks looking at this from different angles, professions, not just simply potentially one of the zoning board of appeals where you're just looking for relief on something. It's the zoning board of appeals, that's the name, the title of what you're looking for is in the board, it's an appeal process, it doesn't guide anything. It just says, you've been, you deserve relief or you don't. And that's basically the extent of it. So that's where we are right now, but yes, absolutely, the ferry service is on the table. Next year, we may be talking about an extension with Winthrop for another year. Obviously, there's a pretty substantial infrastructure investment to get a bigger boat, a full-time boat, functional, full-time up there. So maybe not next year, but hopefully nearer term than perhaps we expected six months ago, we're going to have a full-time ferry service at Quanum Port Harbor.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. I'll end with this. We're talking about traffic concern, we're talking about parking out of the Lees Island, and it's almost like we need to kind of encourage people to get off the road. So if we're going to encourage people to get off the road, we have to have bike infrastructure, some type of bike rack set up there that, you know, I've seen the designs in front of me as well. But we also have to have this kind of all set up together to encourage people to use this, use, you know, Uber, use, you know, other different vehicles, your cars, taxi service, and not use your vehicle. Maybe have some like the shuttle services getting into this area. So we kind of have to look, I think the word is, we need to look outside the box, and find other avenues to get vehicles off the road, if this approves, when we get to a level of new apartments or finding into this area.
Thank you, Mr. DeBona. I just want to be clear for the Admiral Bureau, the document in front of us tonight is the Transit Oriented Development Document, just defining a district. We are not permitting a project, that comes later. When we looked at what the city had for our zoning and development laws, prior to our reconstitution, I think it was in 2010, I know it was Council of Publicity in the highest first term, the development laws that were on the books in Quincy were from 1960, right? They hadn't been with that in 50 years. We said about, you know, the development game plan for the city, the master development game plan, we had quite antiquated development laws. And this now is recognized that development is happening around the train stations. So with that, I just want to be clear, we had had discussion about removing at this time laws to train and Quincy Adams. So at this point, I'm going to make a motion to amend this, to strike laws in T Station as well as Quincy Adams from this ordinance in particular, so that we're going to focus versus a discussion on with Quincy T. So.
Second.
Second in by the Council of Harris, the Republican chairman.
Council King.
Yes.
Council Flo.
Yes.
Council Fong.
Yes.
Council Finn.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Hughes.
Yes.
Council Yang.
Yes.
Council Publicity.
Yes.
Chairman Forrest. Thank you. The other, I guess I'll go to point over to Council Finn.
Well, I'm certain glad I didn't have any problem with that, and then the Madam Chairwoman.
Sorry, I mean, the session kind of lost its structure.
I'm going to agree with you to a certain extent, but I think that I'd like to follow up on it, because I think the actual questions that my colleague raised are some of the most serious questions. And I think that, you know, specifically, I can recall, not exactly when, but early on in the previous administration, there were some proposals that were coming forward regarding specifically North Quincy that no one wanted. And in truth, it was the foresight and vision, quite honestly, of Mayor McIntyre in 1967 that really kind of gave this city, in my mind, a great way of working to ensure that development that moved forward was somehow consistent with what argues for our concerns. If I remember correctly, it was a movie theater in Student House in New Mexico, that was the argument, previous proposal. I clearly believe that whatever's being proposed right now is better than that. But it does raise certain specific concerns that my colleague raised, and I'm hoping that, again, at some future point, even though we won't have all the specifics, again, given the various regulatory things the developer has to meet with the state, et cetera, but at least we can get some sense of their perspective in terms of the impact and how that's going to affect specifically that area, and how they're considering those various issues, and how that fits within a larger context. We're going to have that opportunity here to have that conversation.
Absolutely.
Right, to speak to that. And the other thing, again, you really summed up very well, because what we have found in terms of trying to be consistent planning and achieving what we hope to achieve in kind of a planned manner, traditional zoning really hasn't worked that well in terms of doing that, because of the limits that pretty much sets in some of the guise. And I think that leads me to some of the questions that I have for you, Rob, in relation to this specifically, oh, the point I really wanted to make in relation to this, the traffics are in this already. I mean, in that area, in terms of the ponds and bridge, in terms of Quincy Shore Drive, all of those things. And it's not going to get any better necessarily by simply doing nothing or ending development per se. But I think it does inform a larger picture, again, of hopefully arounds planning related to development, is coming up with ways, not simply to further that development, but hopefully to mitigate some of those situations in some way. And again, it has to be kept in mind that this is, you know, MBTA's property, et cetera, et cetera. And as we move forward, this can possibly, hopefully, become an opportunity to address some of those specific things. But here's the question back to you, Mr. Stevens, is that, and again, you've got to remind me, you're titled, again, Principal Planner, Principal Planner, and, you know, clearly, you've been engaged in this particular process. Given the sense of what the community hopes to achieve and our objectives, do you feel that that could necessarily be accomplished by relying solely on existing zoning?
That's a good question. And we'll say this, the project as it's contemplated is, could be filed under the existing business C zone. What's absent, though, is going back to that design guideline, though, is the city's expectations of what that development will look like.
Okay, well, let's stop you right there, because this is one of the issues that I'm concerned about. We've heard, and it's been an attention, I know, as long as I've been on this body, it's been focusing around the concept of mixed-use development. So I guess the question that I would add is, in relation to the objective of retail and hopefully trying to guarantee that there's going to be some level of retail that's part of that, is that something you can guarantee going through a traditional zoning process?
No, you can't always guarantee retail.
Why is that?
A lot of times, from my experiences, from what I've seen of the development that have come forward, you know, retail alone typically is not a money-generating activity. Combined with residential units and retail, you almost create, you know, that market right there for that retail. That seems to be what's come forward quite a bit. I think about the Monroe Place Building when that came online. A number of those stores stayed vacant for a period of time until they could find tenants to move in. Whereas, you know, fast forward 10 years, the West Chestnut Building opens up, and they've got four leases before they were known. You know, so there's that slight difference, because it was the residential going into the area where it wasn't residential before. So at the North Quincy site, there's no residential directly on that side, so, or at any of the T stations.
So, again, I guess, in terms of where I'm trying to go with this, is that even though we recognize in some respects that this, in a sense, for some regards, may simplify the permitting process, it does so in exchange for a different approach, correct, from, again, including from the developer, because essentially the trade-off that's occurring in this kind of concept is that the developer is now committing to a set of guidelines and principles that within a more traditional zoning model doesn't have to do that.
You're absolutely right, yes.
So that one of the ways of viewing particularly what we're doing here, and again, you know, I always hate putting the cart before the horse in some regards, but in the case of this, what we're really doing is talking about and creating this overlay is, to some extent, again, not what the details are, but giving the preconditions necessary to move forward in a more aggressive fashion around really planned and planning out what happens there.
Correct.
So I think, again, I'm generally supportive of that specific concept, because I don't think, first off, I think it would be unfair if you asked the zoning board to step into that responsibility, because that's not really what they do. And if I understand, and I could be wrong, but if I understand site plan review correctly as well, that's really not meant to address the type of development that you want there as much as it's meant to address the impact of what's being proposed in some regards. So then, this overlay is kind of critical in terms of trying to achieve this concept of transit-oriented development. Is that accurate?
I do think that's accurate, and, you know, talking about some of the old ways of using zoning for development, you know, my experience is, you know, particularly here in the center, you know, irregular lot sites, you know, utilities underneath, you know, these are redevelopments, these aren't, you know, greenfields, open areas, you know, that hadn't had development on. You need some flexibility, you know, speaking to some of the dimensional, you know, pullbacks on some of the dimensional setback requirements. I think streamlining it with the planning board is proper for to handle that. Site plan review is, that's it. And site plan review, it's not a yes or no question. It's, you know, do you meet all of the, you know, checklist items, that site can be reviewed, special permit? That's really the authority, that's the approval that you want to give to projects this size. And having that, you know, both those roles, a review of the entirety of the project, and then the planning board voting on that, I think, we use, is the best way to go forward.
In the event of a worst-case scenario, I want to say, but ultimately, the zoning ordinance itself, it's this body that determines the actual code, is correct?
That's my understanding, so I just wait.
In a worst-case scenario, we've just deducted two of the sites for now, that we'll have a more progressive kind of approach to looking at those things. But in the event that we suddenly determine this was kind of, didn't work, then it's within our ability, and I don't know if you need to consult with a solicitor for that, but generally, we could amend it, change it, correct?
Correct, yeah.
And finally, I think Madam Chairwoman threw you to, I guess, Mr. Walker, is that, again, some of the questions, because he's right on target, Council of DeBona, in terms of what issues and concerns that people are facing, we will have the opportunity, again, to ask those questions and to get to the substance of the actual proposal that's coming before us, to do that in some way.
Through you, Madam Chairwoman, to the council. Yes, absolutely, council. It is the administration's intention, and the developer's intention to be here, a future meeting, a full presentation, a full team of development experts, their engineers, their architects, their traffic folks, to have a full discussion relative to the issues as they exist now and as they will exist, and to get as deep into it as the council wishes.
Okay, that's it. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Council Finn. I appreciate your, I appreciate your comments relative to the original zoning. I think what's important to recognize is that the property has rights, right? So, you know, as a business C parcel, with the size of scope it is, it has rights to develop that, whether it goes through a traditional approval process. You know, for example, the Bridge Street project, which we're working on, is just outside of the downtown New York Peak District, doesn't, it doesn't have the streamlined process that OTN is putting, meaning, if we can go to the planning board, if we can keep the can down the road on zoning board, where you can go through such an extensive planning board process, with site plan review and peer review, yet they still need to go through zoning board, so it's another board. So now we're going to get this far down the road, and then the zoning board says, no, you're right. So I can only feel, I've lived a lot in seeing some of these properties just outside of downtown going through a much more cumbersome process, and then you just leave, you can't have a road to Gate Paul, everybody lined up on one side through the planning board process, and it's a very extensive permitting process. And that's so important, we are, we get to get into the details about, you know, the traffic and parking. So I agree, no question, particularly for the gateway to the city, one of the common areas that is, but by us creating this framework in the section, Council of Publicity, which was 8.5, 1.6, to improve traffic access to circulation, the proponent of the project in the TOD will have to prove to the planning board that they have made improvements in those specific areas. So I see this as definitely on the framework. Not having spoken, Councilor Publicity.
Thank you, Chairman Forrest. I just want a couple of questions, thoughts. Through you to Mr. Walker.
When you're saying we're going to have a full presentation, what are you referring to? I wasn't entirely clear.
From the proponent of the North Quincy, the, these winning bidder with the MBTA.
And that will be before the council?
That's up to the council. We believe that that has an appropriate place in front of the council, also has an appropriate place in committee. That's certainly up to this board.
So the air right component of it will come before the council. We will not be the SBGA, we are referring down to the planning board.
What a referring by.
I mean, by ordinance.
Ordinance.
Right.
We wouldn't be voting on the project.
But we have to approve the air right portion of the project.
Okay, that's, that's why, Mr. Walker, I sent a letter to them, I think there's a little bit of confusion about this issue, that's why I sent a letter to the mayor seeking some additional information and asking for the solicitor's office to weigh in, and the councils have a copy of that in the act tonight. But asking the solicitor's office to weigh in with the extent of the consent is, is being sought, any other examples where such a thing has been done in terms of municipal government giving consent to something, because I think it's different. And I think we all read it in a little bit of a different way, and the way in which it's applied, I think, has significant consequences for that area, as well as for the residents who live there and the developer who comes forward, and obviously for the T as well. You received that letter, I recognize.
That's correct.
And a response that's being worked on?
That is correct. Well, yes.
What's the hesitation?
As of this afternoon, council, there was some discussion about having that discussion, there was some discussion about having that discussion this evening. Through more discussion, it was determined that the focus tonight should remain on the zoning ordinance and then bring the air rights issued back at a subsequent meeting. So at that point, focus on whether or not answering that. Solicitor Timmons is prepared to answer those questions, he was prepared to answer those questions for you this evening, but since the focus of the meeting, at least the discussion points that we have, sort of changed from the overall air rights component to just the zoning ordinance, that was the result of my hesitation.
Just to clarify, Council Publicity, earlier, the council order 2016-248 was tabled to a future meeting.
I understand.
So we do have, for the Admiral Bureau, authorizing the MBTA to lease the air rights over North Quincy is a matter on the agenda before us that is not being discussed this evening, that is being prepared for a future meeting. So we did announce that at the outset of the meeting.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
I asked through you to, to Rob, because you're the guy standing in the microphone. Good evening.
Good evening.
I have, you know that I have tremendous respect for what you guys in the planning department do, what you do yourself. Plays a big role in kind of shaping the vision of how we want things to be in the city. That being said, I'm complimenting you because I'm about to not compliment you. I read the design guidelines, and there were multiple times that I literally just laughed out loud reading it, because in my experience... out loud reading it, because in my experience, you know, I wrote down a quote that you said tonight, developers need to follow our guidelines that are in these design guidelines. And I know in other communities, they follow the design guidelines that are laid out by the planning department, by the municipality, but in Quincy, I don't see that happening. You know, I voted on the URDP, which has design guidelines, it says, we're going to have public space, it says, we're going to have an art component, we're going to have all these things, and we've permitted three projects downtown, and not a single one of them has. So these things get dealt away. I mean, on page 22, it says there'll be first floor, or that it's encouraged to have first-floor cultural facilities. I mean, is that realistic? Do we really believe that the North Quincy project is going to have first-floor cultural facilities? Do you have any idea? I mean, I...
Well, it's encouraged for many different uses in this proposed guidelines.
I just cannot see anyone doing cultural facilities at these TOD districts, whether they are, it's in Wallaston, or in Quincy Adams, or in North Quincy. I think, I like it, I'm all board with it, but I feel like, you know, we, it's almost like we get sold the bill of goods up here to support something in terms of zoning, or rezoning something late with the downtown, we codify it, we are in the P, and then the things that are in there become suggestions that never actually get implemented. Quite honestly, the way I look at it is, you have design standards, so you can set the direction of a policy, you can say, all right, well, we're going to give you X, but we get Y, because that's going to make a better project, that's going to make a better city to live in, that's going to make a better area to develop. You get public spaces, you get a market square, you get that because you're giving away something else on the development side. So what I see with these kind of ordinances, the zoning is, we're giving away something to the developer in terms of an easier process with site plan review, with increased building height, things like that, and then the ask for that is that they give us better projects. And I'm not speaking specifically to any one project at this point, but what I've seen happen, you know, and that's what I would hope would happen in the future, but what I've seen happen is, the city just deals that away, and says, oh, well, that's just a suggestion, you don't really have to do that, but you can absolutely build as high as you want to, you can absolutely build to 15 stories, or, you know, you can absolutely take advantage of this aspect of the permitting process so that, you know, you don't have as much exposure to someone filing an appeal of your permit, but you don't actually have to have any art or pay into the art fund, you don't actually have to have any affordable housing, why would we build workforce housing, affordable housing around public transportation? Honestly. So my concern with some of that, I mean, I'm right, because I read everything that you send us, and I think it's valuable, I think it's important. My comments come out of frustration because we don't put that into practice. The things that you put in that document or that collectively were put into that document, I believe in, I like that, I think it sounds terrific. But when it comes time to implement that, I never see it happen, I never see it enforced. I'll give you another example. It calls for benches, to encourage benches in the area of these developments. Great idea, great idea, I fully support that. I supported it when, in the Brew's Corner redevelopment plan that the planning department came up with, we installed benches around Brew's Corner. Some of those benches were removed in the past couple of months because some unsavory characters decided that they would take up almost residence there on a nightly basis and use it as a bar. They'd go into the liquor store, they'd move across the street, they'd go in, they'd buy alcohol, they'd come out, they'd sit on the bench, and they'd harass people. And I got a number of calls, a number of calls, and I worked with everybody I could possibly work with to try and correct the behavior, including the store owner, who, I don't even know what his issue was, but kind of played dumb with the whole situation. He said, they're sitting two feet away from your front door, you're telling me, it's the same guys every night, tell me you don't know who they are? I said, stop selling to them if that's what they're going to do, make that clear to them. That never happened. I don't consider that particular business to be a good community partner, but... So what ends up happening is they just take the benches out. The city just removed the benches. So we have a problem, we just remove the benches. So my concern is, we're now encouraging people to put benches around in these design guidelines around the MTA stations. Not to mention the fellow that I don't think is a very good community partner, who operates the liquor store down there, is the same guy that just gave a license to operate the liquor store in the Quincy Center District. So I feel like we're perpetuating these things, right, where we have these ideals, but then we don't enforce them in any way, and we're, as a city, we're too quick to simply wave them away and say, okay, benches are a good idea, but, you know, we have to hold people accountable to actually have useful benches that didn't cause a problem, so we'll just remove the bench. Not remove the person, we'll remove the bench. So it's with deep frustration that, I'm not criticizing the design guidelines themselves, I'm criticizing the failure to implement the design guidelines, because I think they are valuable, and I think the things that you're trying to do, the planning department suggesting we should be doing in these districts, are the things we should be doing, but that's not what actually happens. And we have no control over that in the legislative branch, that's an executive function to actually do the things, right? So once we vote in favor of a new transportation district, once we vote in favor of a new amendment to the URDP, it's then outside of our control, it's outside of our hands, and we rely on the administration to enforce those things. Quite frankly, I've been disappointed with the way in which those measures have been enforced today. I had a whole host of questions for you last meeting about Quincy Avenue, but since that's out, I'll reserve that for another time. One other thing that I think would be, so I have an amendment that I'd like to offer, and I'll offer in a minute, I don't know if we're going to break or come back to it, but one other thing that I do want to comment on is that I do think there should be a more robust public process. I think the more you involve the public, the better the outcome is. And we have design standards, and I don't know that there's been any public input on the design standards, I think that's valuable. I know that there was a, Councilor Harris and Councilor Koen had a workshop-style meeting for the development in North Quincy, I understand, well, that's terrific, I think we should be having more of those, I think we should be having a more robust public discussion on anything that goes into these districts, the transportation districts. And I know, I've discussed the same with Councilor Yang, I guess I'll yield to Councilor Yang if she wants to jump in on that subject, and then I'll come back at some other point to make an amendment to this particular ordinance.
Okay, Councilor Yang. Thank you, thank you, Councilor Pal Munguji. What he's referring to is the involvement of the community, I know Mr. Stevens answered a question earlier about the guidelines from the planning board and the community involvement of that. I know, you know, Mr. Walker, in his office, he said we can have community input. That being said, there is an amendment that I do want to add on to this ordinance, and as much as I can implement it, will solidify that this is going to move forward with consistent involvement with the community. So to that effect, I wanted to add a bullet point number eight to 8.5.1 to say, what is the purpose, the purpose of this section is to, number eight, to say, identify and engage in opportunities to collaborate with the public and robusten the public process. Again, just to solidify and sort of memorialize on here that this will be a public and legal process, that it's from start to finish. I know a lot of you have suggested that that will happen with the guideline process, but just to have it in here, I think will help us move forward to make sure that that happens.
I'll second that, even though it doesn't need to say.
Okay, seconded by Councilor Pal Munguji, correct to the amendment. I just want to keep all the council's weight in the house, okay?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, and I'll throw you to Mr. Stevens, thank you for coming this evening and, you know, to kind of echo the sentiment myself included. I appreciate the hard work that the Planner Fatfies and your department does. I know that you're tasked nowadays with countless hours, and I also know that as a board council, the district has quite a few projects, often in a collective order, I spend many, you know, many of ours in both the planning board as well as zoning board, you know, meetings, so kudos to you. You know, when I think about, when I think about, when I see development, you know, I feel that it's needed throughout the city. When I go downtown and I see, you know, kind of the evolution of a city taking place in the city, I mean, that's encouraged, or unencouraged by seeing those. The process leading up to this evening's discussion has, for me, been a little bit challenging to kind of keep track of before we had essentially an ask which would qualify every MTA station, now we've relinquished several of them, we're going to look at the air rights, now we're tabled on the air rights, and, you know, for me, the discussion is very, very fast-paced. I want to stay away from, because I feel like it's two different things, what we're speaking about is the actual, what we're not speaking about is the actual development taking place in North Quincy, which from what I've seen, I do believe will be a high-quality development and more likely than not a game changer for that area. That being said, much to Councilor Pal Munguji's comments, you know, being a board council, it's absolutely imperative to me that when projects are in my district in particular, you know, there are several opportunities for the public to participate in the process because on so many levels, right? I mean, if you're a taxpayer, you own, you're affected whether good, bad, or indifferent by a potential project, but I also feel that it provides an opportunity for an idea share in some of the projects that may have been met with a little bit of opposition, I feel, after I talked about, and neighborhood input is not put on the table, I feel like, you know, you can take a project and make it even better. So kind of going back to what you had said about, you know, this particular overlay district creating a very high product, very high, you know, scale development, something we can all be proud of. I know the city enough, and I know your department enough, to know that you guys are always advocates, whether it's a special, you know, overlay district or not, to make sure that we're always advocating for the highest quality effort in any development. You know, what I think about is, you know, the zone, where I get a little stuck on, and I understand what we're trying to do, we're trying to create a framework in a particular district, but in doing so, we're also relinquishing an opportunity for the public to participate in, you know, call it a zoning, and with that, you know, I kind of, I have a little bit of a reservation around, for me personally. You know, and when I think about just the evolution of, you know, the city, I know that once a project is built, essentially, you know, that is and what will be, you know, in the district. So every opportunity that we can take, you know, the board council, working with the planning department, working with really all of the parties involved, the developer, along with the residents, you know, to mitigate things that I've already had this evening talked about, like, you know, traffic and parking. You know, I recently hosted a coffee hour, and, you know, what's top of people's minds are trees, traffic, parking, and development, you can take those in any order, but that's what people are talking about. So, again, the process, I feel, for this overlay district has moved pretty quick. And I also know that a lot of this is driven by economics, right? The market's hot and there's a high appetite for residential development. That being said, I also know that, you know, the city has a certain amount of, you know, leverage to work and create this development that may not be spelled out in an overlay district. So I'd be curious to hear maybe a little bit more about what the amendment is in terms of the public participation, but for me personally, looking at an opportunity or a situation that would essentially mitigate out, you know, a forum for folks to participate publicly through zoning, you know, I'm just, I'm a little stuck there. So I just wanted to share my comments. I'll look forward to maybe learning a bit more here this evening around this dialogue, but that's what I've processed up until this point, so thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Okay, to the mayor's representative, Mr. Walker.
I couldn't have changed, just to clarify a little bit on the process here, the difference in the process. We would argue that it's a more rigorous public process, with more requirements, more public input, more decision-making capability, more collaboration ability through the special permit process of the planning board, as opposed to the variance process, where the zoning board appeals in, and it's based, that's what we're talking about here, the difference in the process. We're not taking away anyone's right to comment on a project, we're not, you know, all of a sudden just doing away with the legal process here, we're creating a legal process that's more thorough than the zoning board, that has more capability, the planning department has the capability for peer review, the planning department has the capability to bring in experts. The zoning board is not set up as a planning and development agency. You go there for a variance because the zoning code doesn't work for whatever project it is. We want to make the zoning code work for these areas, and it does not affect in any way, shape, or form the level of public process that goes along with it.
Yes, that's the problem.
I can agree to, you know, a lot of that to an extent. You know, if you go traditional zoning right now, through the planning process, any project is afforded the opportunity to subject a peer review, so you have the third-party independent consultants essentially vetting the process. So that process is already in place with the current process that we have as a city. I mean, I understand what you're saying in terms of zoning, I understand what, you know, has been shared here this evening with the transit-oriented design guidelines, but, you know, I've also seen some pretty good results come out of discussions that take place at the zoning board here for residents. And I also, maybe just some more clarity around, you know, that there was a recommendation that came out of the planning board to essentially go from, what, five-acre site to one-acre site, and then what would that, you know, mean, I guess, in terms of, you know, in overall project? Are you subject to four, five, six one-acre projects, or?
Well, a lot of this is trying to anticipate what the private development community is going to come forward with, and to respond the best way we can, you know, from a city's point of view. You know, the five acres is what was originally noted in the zoning ordinance, I believe. The inclusion of Wallaston Station originally posed difficulties, it would never work in most, and I mean, the station, everything in the station, including the right-of-way, is just, you know, I think a little more than seven acres, so it was, I advocated to the planning board at the time that, you know, I felt that the minimum lot area for someone to capitalize on the TOD zoning should be lower to one acre, which is about 43,000 square feet, is about an acre. So I think with Wallaston being taken out, I would still advocate for the one acre. I think five acres, you know, going back to the five acres, I've not, I don't think that would have a major issue, but I still would advocate for the one acre. Because it was coming forward, but they haven't got any approvals in place. You know, there is a worst-case scenario where they back away from this project and we're faced with smaller developments as they come forward. That one acre, that's a pretty big size, you know, just to begin with, so.
Fifty thousand square feet, is that?
Yeah, forty-three thousand square feet. So that's the minimum lot area you have to have to even get into this TOD zoning oval.
No, I understand. And I guess like when my mind goes longer term, I know it's since been subtracted from this discussion here this evening, when Councilor Munguji had mentioned it, right? So if you create the overlay district here, I'm assuming that essentially you're setting precedent for some capacity, right? So developer, development comes and looks at Quincy Adams, what does that look like? And again, I don't represent the whole portion where, say, Home Depot is, or if that was to come up and over on the Independence Avenue, you know, now you're talking about, you know, potential negative impacts to, you know, folks I represent. potential negative impacts to, you know, folks I represent, uh, in that area, so.
Right, so I believe the Quincy Avenue Station is zoned industrial by North Quincy and Walston or Business C, so it'd be industrial uses, uh, potential that could come forward now, or they could ask for a use variance from the zoning board.
Which I would assume would happen, right? I mean, that nobody has the crystal ball, but I, I think that's a, that's a fairly safe assumption, so.
But, you know, to deal with a, um, to try to deal with a project, to review a project, you know, uh, obviously I've, I've witnessed that a lot of cases come forward in the struggle with the planning board. When out of the gate, you already don't have to, you know, you've got variances on setback or use or other things, how are you supposed to review a project when, you know, they got all this to leak? So, other things in the zoning code, you know, become a little bit more complicated, uh, potentially, but, you know, that's, that's sort of, you know, do away with some of the dimensionals and, and let's pick up, you know, the concepts and, and understand that, you know, city, uh, Quincy is a, it's an urban city and we're, we're going through a period of redevelopment.
We are.
And, yeah, it, it's great, but, uh, there's chances to go back into areas and, and try to improve, you know, utilities, you know, infrastructure, uh, those types of things. You know, we do work with developers on, on water lines, sewer lines, drain lines. It's not just roads and, and, you know, I, I hear, I hear aloud in plans throughout the city traffic and parking. I, it's traffic, parking, and I'd, I'd say stormwater, a three main, um, spheres of our review to make sure that our projects that we approve, um, you know, with the recommendations, uh, are gonna make Quincy a better place.
And peer review allows you to do that?
Yes, it does. And, um, and, and the peer review allows us to deal with the, the, um, the capacity issues that in the entire city system, uh, governmental system gets struggled with from time to time, uh, in that way. We can, you know, eight, uh, independent engineering firms under contract and, uh, pretty much on a rotating basis, you know, we can pick one of those eight firms to review, you know, eight, you know, each case as they come forward. We don't have to rely on, you know, the, the, all the traffic engineers, uh, city engineers, uh, to do the full review. They get the benefit of the independent peer review engineer and they get to focus their comments and their recommendations with the benefit that that peer review was well. So, uh, we, we have, it's a capacity issue, I think, um, you know, that we haven't discussed about. Uh, the planning board being as a special permitting authority with the active independent peer review process in place. Uh, we see, we think that, you know, that, uh, is, is, is really the best way to go in the world of development that we see.
Appreciate your feedback.
And, and that's at the proponent's cost too as well, um, you know, which is, is great benefit, and that's on, uh, the, the, the taxpayers who put that through you.
Right, and it is right now currently as well.
Correct, yes, exactly. Yeah, the developers pay an application fee and peer reviews fee based on the status of the project.
Of course, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Crowe. We are going to be recessing the ordinance committee meeting, open up the council meeting, recessing council, going back to topic. I did have some final comments from, there is a motion to vote first.
Yeah, there's a motion.
Motion for, um, Council, Mr. Walker, do you want to?
No, no, no.
Okay, all right, on, let's, on the motion? On the motion specifically?
I thought we could open the meeting and go back to it directly.
Mr. Walker, motion. Council ladies sit down.
Yes. So she can't withdraw them.
Yeah, she can't withdraw it.
She can't.
On the table.
So, can it just stand on the table until we?
Till we reopen the meeting.
You're just recessing the meeting.
We're just recessing the meeting, not closing, not discussing it on the council agenda. We're reopening the council committee, the committee meeting.
In the sole.
That's what I'm saying.
Can you, this is a parliamentarian.
No, it isn't. Unless we open the meeting, well, we can open the meeting, recess it, and then come back to the committee.
That's our point.
With that?
Okay. With that.
Can I just point out, then you can't vote on this as, as a city council.
No, we're re, reopening the.
I understand what you're saying, you can't go back. You can't go ordinance, council, ordinance, back to council. So, if, if somebody wants this to pass tonight, this cannot pass tonight if you recess out of the council meeting to go back into ordinance.
Mr. Solicitor. Why don't we do it now? The parliamentarians in the audience. Mr. Shea, call a friend.
Why? Why don't you just vote on it now?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because that's additional discussion we have beside the table.
On the motion, publishing your response on it.
All right, so the motion for is, just to be clear.
The amendment to add public.
All right, so the amendment by Council Liang, seconded by Council Kalmuchi, to amend Council Order twenty sixteen dash two forty-nine in section eight point five, adding section eight point five point one point eight to identify and engage in opportunities to collaborate with the public in robust and thorough public process. That motion. Any further discussion on that specific amendment?
Yeah, again, but I, I think if we could just make, have councillor Timmons resolve because I'm not quite sure what Council Kalmuchi's saying about this because in the past, I know we've always, we, we're not closing the planning hearing or recessing.
Correct.
So that we can keep with our rules in terms of just opening the city council, but then we would reopen the planning hearing and, uh, I don't know what.
Mr. Timmons.
I thought, I didn't feel like that.
Point of parliamentary procedure.
This isn't on the motion.
Right.
This is a question, no, I'm, I'm saying to you, I'm, this isn't a question on the motion. It's not a question on the merits of the motion.
So, point of parliamentary procedure by Council Finn calling for us, Solicitor Timmons.
No, I'm calling a point of parliamentary procedure. His question to Solicitor Timmons is not on the merits of the motion. We have a motion on the floor.
No, let's move to the question.
No, we have to move the question, committee.
Mr. Timmons, if you could address the body. Thank you.
I'll confess, I'm thoroughly confused.
We are looking forward, we are up against the clock, we should have started council meeting at seven thirty, but the game plan is to be to recess the ordinance committee meeting, open the council meeting, recess the council meeting, reopen the ordinance committee. Can we do so with a motion on the floor? And we need to continue this discussion. The motion is, an amendment is before us. Can we pause this meeting and reopen it and then re-discuss these amendments to then further be adopted later this evening in the council, regular council meeting?
Yes, um, Madam Clerk and I were discussing that very issue in the corner right around seven thirty, um, and it is appropriate procedurally for you to recess this committee, open the council meeting, and then resume. I heard Council Finn reciting that chronology and that is the one we should call.
And then when we close the court committee meeting, there's no problem then further voting and accepting those amendments later in the evening.
That's correct. You're essentially getting the pause button on the meeting.
That's fair, I understood it as well. How's the Kalmuchi disagree?
I do.
All the friends in the audience?
Ah, just saying, I, it's, we can do it whenever we want. It's, that's fine, I'm not.
With that, we have a bunch of recessed ordinance committee. How do you answer? Go right there? I don't have a standard, but I want to. I think you should just go ahead and. Yeah. I don't have a standard, but I want to. I think you should just go ahead and. Yeah. Yeah. Great, we'll take it. Great. We'll take it. Yeah. No. Why? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep. Good evening. Welcome to the Quincy City Council meeting, Monday, November twenty-first, here at the Gray Hall. Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll. Council King.
Present.
Council Crowe.
Present.
Council DeGorn.
Present.
Council Finn.
Present.
Council Harris.
Present.
Council Liu Yang.
Present.
Council Kalmuchi.
Present.
President Hughes.
Here.
Madam, I appreciate this call. Thank you. Please join me in rising for a moment of silence for our men and women serving here and abroad, particularly on this Thanksgiving week, those who are away from their families. Call by the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands in command, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please leave the open meeting.
For similar to the open meeting laws, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees that they afford by such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed to be knowledgeable and reasonable.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And if you'll move to the first agenda item.
Number one, we do.
Point of order?
Yes.
It was my understanding we were gonna recess from the city council and continue the, the committee hearing.
We, we were going to, we are going to do that, but we thought we would move through some of the agenda items at, at the start of the meeting to, because there are folks who, who are here.
Well, as much as I appreciate that, again, I think we're close to wrapping up the committee hearing before we lose, point of, we agree with Council Kalmuchi in terms of our procedure.
Yeah, no, I would agree with you. I would agree with you, but I was under the impression that we weren't nearing the end of the discussion, so that's why. But if you think the will of the body is different and that we will be nearing the end.
Well, I think if, at a minimum, we had a motion that we're in mid-stuff, I never would have.
Oh, I understand.
So, I, I would really believe we should. This is the practice that over the years that we've done, is we simply open to meet with our rules and then we recess back into the committee and, um, go from there. So, again, I, I believe that would be appropriate, particularly given the, the nature of the debate and the discussion that we, we follow up on there. I mean, we have to have two people wanting to comment specifically in relation to this.
No, I understand. I, I just, because I'm the only one who knows, this was going to be a little longer than, as you indicated, wrapping up, so I just wanted to get through some other items, but that's fine, we can go ahead and recess at this time and ask, um, Council of Forest to come back up.
If you have a problem, please, please.
Okay. Good evening. I have a call to order. The ordinance to back to order, the Council Ordinance Committee, we are discussing Council Order twenty sixteen dash two forty-nine, and then Title seventeen, to add a new section, section eight point five, entitled Transitory Districts. We had just left off with an amendment. There we go. We had just left off with an amendment by, proposed by Council Liang, seconded by Council Kalmuchi, adding a section eight point five point one point eight, which reads, okay, to identify and engage in opportunities to collaborate with the public, with the public in a robust and thorough public process. With that, I'm gonna go back to Council Finn.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. This is in relation, uh, in support of the motion, or supporting, but I do want to make, make sure, given the nature of some of the discussion, I want to make certain, and perhaps we can go through to, to Mr. Walker, if necessary, to Mr. Timmons. But when we talk about the process being set up here, although it's not outlined specifically in relation to, um, or contained, spelled out necessarily within the overlay, this, they're still subject to other laws and regulations under forty-eight, correct? So, in issuing a certificate of consistency, my guess is the planning board will have to hold public hearings in relation to that, correct?
Yes, Councilor.
And so, at some point, that becomes a point of advocacy for councillors as well in terms of, of, at that particular point in time. So, it's not, it's no darn public hearings in relation to this, is that?
That is correct. Correct, Councilor.
And then finally, I just want to make one thing clear because, because I'm getting nervous, as I hear some of my colleagues, but I want to make certain, there's nothing in this at all that visgiates our ability to grant those air rights in relation to that, or to grant that, or there's nothing in here that visgiates that at all, correct?
Absolutely not, Councilor, that is, uh, the council's authority, the mayor's authority, uh, vis-à-vis the special legislation.
And finally, um, and this is it, I promise, the very last thing, I want to make absolutely clear, there's nothing in this that exempts, um, any developer from our inclusionary zoning rights.
That is also correct, Councilor, nothing. If I could just add very briefly on that, on that point, the difference here, I, this goes back to Council Crowe's comments, um, which, which I certainly agree with. Um, the addition here is by right nature of something that could come forward. Um, if someone came forward with six hundred units, essentially eight hundred units with no retail at North Quincy T, um, they would not even go to the zoning board of appeals. All it would be, would be site plan review, which is not a special permit, which is not a, a yea or a nay, you're pretty much, you're in the mix, you're going through site plan review. It's, it's a getting to there process, it's not a, a yes or no.
Correct.
So, I just want, I wanted to be clear about that component too, that someone could come in with a proposal that has X amount of units with no retail and, and they have rights, um, that would not require them to go to the zoning board at all.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, a, a motion, move this question to the.
Yes. Council King.
I'll speak after the motion, or what?
Do you want to speak on the motion?
I don't have anything to say on the motion, I want to speak after the.
Okay, great, okay. With that, um, Madam, with that, Madam Clerk, if you would call the roll on the amendment by Council Liang.
Council King.
Yes.
Council Crowe.
Yes.
Council DeGorn.
Yes.
Council Finn.
Yes.
Council Harris.
No.
Council Hughes.
No.
Council Ann.
Yes.
Council Kalmuchi.
Yes.
Chairman Torres.
Yes. Seven members vote, the member passes.
Okay.
Okay. Council King.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, through you to the mayor's representatives, so with that being said, that you just sort of threatened that, uh, there could be no retail and there's only residential, um, wasn't there an R B process that the MBTA put forward to select a certain developer for a project on Parkham Lot Set?
Correct.
And who was selected for that process?
Those who voted in.
Okay, so what's the threat of, if the project that we have seen in its preliminary development, what's the threat?
We had no formal role in selection of the developer. The T could, in a, in a worst-case scenario, the T could have had three proposals that were by right, that included, um, just residential, um, and they would have had, they would have been within their rights not to go before the zoning board of appeals.
But they, but they've chosen, but they've chosen none of those others.
That is correct from the time being.
What do you mean from the time being?
If something were to change.
with a proposal that has X amount of units with no retail, and they have rights, that would not require them to go to the zoning board at all.
Thank you. So, a motion, move this question to the House.
Yes, Counselor King.
Should I speak after the motion?
Do you want to speak on the motion?
I don't have anything to say on the motion, I want to speak after the motion.
Okay, great, okay. With that, Madam Chair, if you would call the roll on the amendment by Counselor Liu Yang.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor DeGore.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
No.
Counselor Hughes.
No.
Counselor Yang.
Yes.
Counselor Calmucci.
Yes.
Chairman Torres.
Yes. Seven members vote, the amendment passes. Counselor King.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, through you to the mayor's representative, so with that being said, that you just sort of threatened that there could be no retail, and there's only residential, wasn't there an R B. process that the MBTA put forward to select a certain developer for a project on Parkham Lotsec?
Correct.
And who was selected for that process?
Those who voted in.
Okay, so what's the threat of, if the project that we have seen in its preliminary development, what's the threat?
We had no formal role in selection of the developer. The T. could, in a worst-case scenario, the T. could have had three proposals that were byright, that included just residential, and they would have had, they would have been within their rights not to go before the zoning board of appeals.
But they've chosen, but they've chosen none of those options.
That is correct from the time being.
What do you mean from the time being?
If something were to change, if we go through the process again, I'm laying out what we believe to be a worst-case scenario here, so we don't have an option for mixed use. If the T. decides, let's play this out a little bit, the T. decides the city wants no power to this, the city doesn't want anything, if our answer is we don't want anything going on now, okay? Now you're talking about the T. comes in with a byright project, says essentially, you know, "We'll fight you on your air rights," because we don't know that we're 100% with you, that we have those, we'll fight you there.
Which is hardly the case.
No.
You know, both we have the air rights.
We believe we do.
You believe that we do.
That is the city's position.
So what are we even talking about? If we're not certain that we even have the air rights, develop on that property?
We're certain, I'm playing out for you a worst-case scenario, where the T. decides that they've had it with trying to work within the framework of what the city wants to do, and they're just gonna, they're gonna take their rights to the fullest extent. They can challenge us every step of the way, and we could end up with a project up there, and it's not a threat, it's really not a, a term, I hope it didn't come off like that, because I didn't mean it that way. I'm more truly concerned about the prospect of a well-done, mixed-use development at a T. station versus the potential of a byright, residence-only, more units, less retail, and no retail, that ultimately could become part of the reality here. We don't want that to be, we think we're in a trap, having this discussion now, creating the zoning environment that would create the framework for these projects, this kind of project, to work, whether it's this one or another one, to work, but taking you away from the byright potential that someone has in business seat at seven acres on a site, that has incredibly dense potential.
So are you saying that the developer who's been selected by the MBTA, that we've currently already been through the beginning of the public processes, Harris and I held a neighborhood meeting last week, so that project in concept might not actually be the project that that developer, if not for this document?
Entirely, if the zoning does not change, the zoning framework is not created to where we can guide the process, the city wants, the developer may very well say, "I'm going to take my shot at the byright," because clearly that's the way the city has designed the zoning, and, yes, they could. It's my personal opinion, that, yes, that mixed use goes away, that we end up with a 100% residential project there.
It doesn't sound like a good commitment for the city, to be working with a developer that would back away after we've already initiated a public process with residents, constituents, et cetera.
But you're only gonna, without a framework in place, the risk involved, the other dynamics involved here are far greater than with the zoning framework in place. There's a greater risk involving to the zoning board of appeals than there is through the planning of the process where we want it, and they could turn around and say, "We don't even want to go through the zoning board of appeals, we're going to go back with a byright project."
It's very interesting, though, because every single question that I've heard tonight, I still have not heard a compelling argument for why this is necessary, except for your threat, that you're saying that this could go forward in a very different way than it's already been presented to residents. I don't know why we would even introduce such a thing to our constituents, because now we look like we have egg on our face, because we have a developer that we're supposed to take for their word about a project that they want to improve our city, and they're going to go ahead and change it?
The project is dependent on the zoning framework that exists. If the zoning framework goes back to byright zoning, yes, the developer's going to work within the zoning framework. If we create the zoning framework that gets us to where we want to be, then the developer's going to work within that framework, because we've created it for them, we've dictated the process. The existing zoning as it is now, we let it go, it's dictated by the current zoning, and the developer at that point has to determine what are the risks here, and what is the best path forward. In our opinion, the best path forward, isn't downtown, is a programmed development process through the planning board that takes into account public opinion, that takes into account all of the facets of a thorough, rigorous permanent process, and not just receiving a variance. That's the, it's not about threats, it's not about trying to do something a different way, it's really getting it into a process that we believe in, that we control, that takes it away from the variance process, the potential for a variance process, never mind what's allowed by right. It's a lot of threat, Counselor, it's really not, it's creating a framework.
Because what you're asking us is to grant that variance, to act as that zoning body, to in effect approve this project before it's been vetted, as, you know, the process has, every other development project that comes through goes.
Absolutely not. This zoning framework sets, the zoning one sets the framework for the process. The council still has its authority, the air rights, the mayor has his authority with the air rights. We're not changing that.
I just can't imagine, though, you know, we were given this document two weeks ago, right? And we were given this document before we even had a chance for Counselor Harris and I to introduce the project to the neighborhoods, for people to have their public opinion, you know, that meeting that we did have, it was a great meeting, there was a wonderful spread of food, we had people that complained about traffic and parking issues that are, you know, potentially viable for that area, we had people talk about the improvements that I could make. It's, I think it's a great project. I have no problem with transit-oriented districts, I have no problem with growth in the city, I think growth in the city makes sense when it's done right, the ability to promote multimodal transportation right by the MBTA. But I can't imagine that, you know, for a typical change in zoning, you know, which Counselor Forrest alluded to earlier, that they went through in 2010, I think that took a couple of years to go through some vetting processes. No? You took two weeks to review zoning changes?
So, in response, we've recodified the entire, not just zoning development, all of our processes, and I would say it was probably a six-month process, but it was, maybe, city fair comment, how many, it was a very, this, the document was, it was everything from, get commercial vehicle parking in the neighborhood to boat storage.
Exactly, so where, so where, exactly, so where is that in here, right? So we're asked to make-
This goes into that. This is a piece of the big recodification. This is one chapter of a, I mean, it's hundreds of pages. Three-inch buyer according to our book.
I just can't imagine that it would only take two weeks to review this and to add such changes. I know I'd be doing my constituents a disservice if I, you know, didn't carefully scrutinize this a bit more, and there wasn't more of a public process to be had before and before, because as I said, this would affect approve a process, approve a project that as far as we've been vetted.
So-
That's my interpretation. Is everyone else interpreting this differently? That's my interpretation. This gives, you know, it gives the-
So, the permitting process for this project is quite separate from the zoning ordinance policy piece, and so, there's definitely confusion around that. I see this very much as, we are to draft a policy, the policy is small, the details are in the project, the project process is substantial. I see Mr. Fatsy looking to make some comments, so let's, all right, through to Mr. Finn. Excellent.
I want to clarify something in relation to this, and let's perhaps approach this from a different understanding. If somebody were coming before us this evening, saying they wanted to do a byright, a project byright, and they were looking for us to, in that case, grant our consent as it related to the issue of air rights, would any of us do that? And I think the answer to that clearly is no. And so, one of the ways of thinking of this particular framework, this is a precondition to moving forward, that can be totally understood independent from any proposal that comes forward. And I think that what part of it is, is it's also, again, where we need to vet the project, the specific project, comes around a specific question of the air rights. That's our leverage, that's our control. And I agree to a certain extent with my colleague, Counselor King, that a lot of this might have been saved if we had begun that process in terms of coming out a little bit more specifically about input into the guidelines, perhaps, if that had been vetted a little bit more before this body. But I don't want anyone to leave or believe or pressure that voting and the affirmative this, for all intents and purposes, approves a specific project, because it doesn't, it just simply doesn't. Does it make it possible in the context of considering such a proposal? Without question, because it would be insane to grant such rights to merely from a byright prospect. Remember, this isn't our property, this is the MBTA's property. And so what we're really trying to do is, again, create a process, a zoning overlay, a framework, that, again, attracts the type of developers perhaps that we even want in that process. Because, again, I was here once before, and I can tell you, I think you wanted to get a lot of feedback, believe me, we got a ton of it, when the proposal was to do student housing in that very spot. So, again, this is not approving the project. It really isn't. And again, I think that what one has to do in this particular perspective is moving forward, is take a very close look in terms of the whole issue specifically to the air rights, as to the nature of that, to vet those concerns and issues in that process. It's really the critical question. But this is not approving a given project, just to show-
On that point, I respectfully disagree. It might not be approving the project, but it is in effect giving city council approval for this particular project, because we all know that we're only talking about one project here. You know, there's one group that was selected, we're talking about one project, we're granting a relief in here, we are in effect, as a body, the city council approving that, we're giving our standard approval.
I think, and again, through you, Madam President, or Madam Chair, then, and again, I don't want to get into, you know, too in-depth of linguistic analysis in relation to this, you have your opportunity, Counselor, essentially, to say no to this, that moving forward. So, specifically in relation to this, is trying to put in, to place, a zoning framework that defines whoever, whatever project goes in there, does so in a situation outside the traditional zoning framework, and ties whoever that developer is to the whole concept of consistency with the plan that's being laid out. And I just think that that's a little bit different. But the bottom line is, is this body doesn't have to have anything perceived there, in my understanding of that 1967 home loan petition. I'm not saying that that would be the wisest choice by any stretch, but at the same point in time, that's where whoever leaves the road in terms of the project itself, in my mind.
Thank you, Counselor Finn. You know, I look at it as, thank you, thank you, Counselor Finn, I look at it as the city has different frameworks, whether it's the URDT, and it's focused on the downtown, you know, specific geographic area, whether it's a project size opposed to a PUD process, whether it's a different project size opposed to the SPJ, such a common process that this body approves. This is creating a transfer to a district, specific to transit stations, same as to the planning board. We had significant discussion in this body when we were doing the mini downtown project with streetworks, as to the permitting process, and we had a lot of meetings, so I look at it as, this conversation somewhat picks up on that, right, as this body, who's sitting around, well, we look at this district, what is it that we decided as a policy, we've said that we want to streamline the process to encourage development, particularly in the downtown area, giving them the planning board process. The planning board process, you know, I look at, again, that Bridge Street project, we've been going back and forth to multiple boards, and it's a cleaner process for everybody, for the board counselors permitting it, and Counselor Hughes and I, you know, that project is what, 39,000 square feet, we're talking about an acre-sized project. So, just for some scope, with that, we did have, you know, this is taking a bit longer, another amendment we were previously discussing, so as we are in committee, I'd like to make the motion that is going to reduce the minimum lot size as recommended by the planning board from five acres to one acre. Do you want to have any discussion on that motion? The five-acre reduction as recommended to the planning board. Madam President, if you could call the roll.
Counselor King.
Yes.
This is the reduction in the recommendation from the planning board, reduction from five acres to one acre. Madam Burke.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor DeGore.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Liu Yang.
Yes.
Counselor Calmucci.
Yes.
Chairman Torres. Let's ask Counselor Forrest, is there anything else? Counselor Calmucci.
I only yielded my time.
You did, I did.
So I warned, I warned you. So I have a couple of things. The first is, I can't find the section, because I had it earmarked on the last, oh, I'm looking at the tenth. I had it earmarked the last time, I think it's currently, it currently reads eight stories for the building.
Currently, we have ten on the building, I have it at ten stories.
I wanted to make an amendment to go down, I think 10 stories is too, I don't know if there's any justification, maybe through you to Mr. Fatsy, is the justification for 10 stories, do you have a recommendation as to size? I mean, I think 10 stories is too big, but I'm going to make an amendment to lower it, I just don't know what that number is yet.
I think there's a practical piece of this, if you're going eight stories, you're using steel. It would be a financial piece of this, it is well within your right to amend as you see fit, but I just did want to point out that that, from a practical standpoint, if someone is going to build eight stories, they're going to use structural steel, 10 is generally what was proposed as an allowance, it might make more sense from that point of view, but I don't stand here telling you what it has to be, it just is, these are recommendations that have come before you, and you can feel free to do it.
I take everything as a recommendation.
Well, I recognize that. If I may, just respond just a little bit on this, again, I came up because I did want to make sure that the other-
You're responding to a question, and you're asking-
I am, can I?
By all means.
I just wanted to make sure that we were going to go back to the acreage piece, which was a concern, and did want to make sure that that did apply. And to the Counselor of Board Three, I do want to make clear, this is a tool to, a planning, which allows us to have some form. I don't like to go to the round zero, if these guys turn into rotten people, and it's basically a butt for it. Again, what we're trying to do is we're trying to come up with guidelines, as you know, they are drawn, and if there are things, as you're hearing tonight, that trouble you, and you'd like to look by right on it, I don't need you to deserve that. I want to make sure that this is not, we don't think that from a threat standpoint, we are talking about this particular opponent, they were selected by the T. independently, as you know, we did not have any input whatsoever as to, you know, whether we got to choose, you know, party A, B, C, and number three, opposite, K, B, F, or S. As we go forward, I do believe very strongly that you have every right to stop this project as you go along, in the normal course of what this council does, I think the mayor's spokesman tried to make that clear, there's a process here before us, and again, I don't want to leave anybody with the impression that we're looking at this as, well, when the bad guy comes in and says, "No retail, density," that's the case. That's a butt-for situation, you know, that's the worst-case scenario. It is our job to make sure that we do present that, but I don't want to suggest that there's been any- But I don't want to suggest that there's been any indication or reason for us to believe that that would be the outcome. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thanks, Jeff, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, that's Counselor Palucci.
Thank you. I want that time deducted from my thinking. I also, that wasn't the amendment, oh, I didn't make the amendment yet, did I? Sorry, I was dizzy by your verbal display. I would move to amend that particular section 8.5.3, Section 3, maximum number of stories currently reads eight. I would amend that to, I'm sorry, currently reads 10, I would amend that to eight. So substitute the number 10 for the number 8.
Any discussion on the motion? Madam President, if you could please call the board.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Crowell?
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn?
No.
Counselor Finn?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Hughes?
No.
Counselor Yang?
Yes.
Counselor Palucci?
Yes.
Chairman Hars?
No.
Counselor Palucci, you still have the floor.
Thank you. I think that it's important, I know we're discussing the zoning ordinance, but I think at any point we have an opportunity to stand up for the things, you know, we value highly, and I think we should. And I think one of the things that I particularly value highly, given the meetings, the oversight committee meetings that we've been having lately over this year, on exploring the underground economy and wage theft, and really getting into how the construction industry in Quincy and unfortunately throughout the Commonwealth in many respects works, and that there are, you know, there are good developers and bad developers. I think this would be an ideal opportunity to put forth principle that in these districts, at least, because that's before us now, that we will require workers working in this district, creating the buildings being built in this district, be paid based on a prevailing wage. I think that it's about fair wage for folks. Later tonight, I'm going to be introducing with a couple of my colleagues and ordinance that calls for a Quincy employment plan that would require projects similar to this to have a minimum of Quincy employees employed on the job sites. Anyone driving around the city sees the boom in construction, you see the boom in construction in other communities. I think it's important that the residents of this city benefit from the economy that's being created with developments, both in city projects and non-city projects. And I think this is one small way in which we can ensure that Quincy residents get a fair wage and get a fair shot at some of this work. So I would move to add, to amend this particular measure by adding Section 8.5.9, titled "Pervailing Wage", states any development under this transit-oriented district shall be required to compensate workers no less than the current prevailing wage.
Okay. Actually, gonna number that, that would potentially number 8.5.8 as our final, existing is 8.5.7, as the ordinance has presented.
I'll accept that as a friendly.
Okay. And on the amendment, I believe we have someone representing the administration?
I believe Counselor Timmons is prepared to discuss to the gallows.
Okay, Solicitor Timmons, if you could please come forward relative to Counselor Palucci's amendment relative to prevailing wage.
Whatever you want, Chief.
Madam Chair?
Thank you.
Counselor Palucci was good enough to discuss this with me prior to bringing the motion tonight because he recalled our discussion last week on the underground economy. And I would just counsel all the members that, I'm essentially gonna replay my thoughts of last week, that as laudable as the objective just denunciated by Counsel Palucci may be, the fact is when you amend the zoning ordinance, the issues you can deal with are regulations relating to the use of the land, buildings and structures, or issues relating to the health, safety, and welfare of the present and future inhabitants. So the point of the zoning ordinance is to protect structures and buildings on the site or the inhabitants on the site, not the workers on the site. So the problem we have here is that the proposed amendment would run afoul of that and would just be facially invalid. Secondly, I had mentioned this last week, that there's a case out of Worcester, Bloom versus Worcester, 1970s case, and it talks about a civil rights commission that City of Worcester tried to, well, did establish. But the SJC reviewed some of the provisions within that ordinance and found that to the extent that the ordinance interfered with civil relationships, it was beyond the authority of the municipality to regulate under the Home Rule Amendment. So I think this also implicates that particular issue and would be a reason why it would be invalid as well. So again, notwithstanding the laudable objective, I just think that it's illegal under zoning, illegal relative to the Home Rule Amendment. And then my final concern is that court order in the Merit Alliance case, I sent a copy of it out to you as part of an advisory on another matter on the agenda this weekend. The concern in the Merit Alliance case was something called ERISA preemption. ERISA is a federal act, the Employee Retirement Income Security Act, and talks about mostly estro funds and what employers do to them. Well, anything that could touch tangentially on that concept, I would be concerned about it. I'm concerned that mandating the prevailing wage in these projects could end up implicating how benefits are then calculated and adjusted. And it's just something I really counsel you to stay away from due to the existence of the court order in the Merit Alliance case, which includes an injunction necessary. So I probably made it clear that I would ask you to both know on this. But, and again, as laudable as the goal is, I think-
No, 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 I'm not, Eric.
Sometimes you have to really pound the stake into something that gets into your mind, Counselor. So that's all, I just want to make sure, because there are a number of little issues with it.
Thank, I'll just, I'll finish on you. Thank you for your legal input, Jim. You have not disabused-
And now go sit down.
You have not, no, someone else may have some, I think Finn has. You have not disabused me of the notion and how vulnerable it is, what it comes up about. I yield down, thank you.
Counselor Finn?
Yeah, I'm just curious, since it's come up, but I wasn't prepared. I really don't know the answer to this, and I know that you never can help your own scout. Don't ask questions, you don't have the answer to them. But the one, the relationship to the MBTA, does that require prevailing wage in relation to this project?
It may, I'm not certain either. And if it does, then obviously there'll be complaints. Somehow, one of the things I learned that mystified me was that the state is allowed to do invasion prevailing wage mandates, whereas if the municipality does it, it's a problem. I'm still not certain how or why that's the case, but it is. And so it's possible the T is an independent body politic, it's an authority, so they may have somehow escaped that mandate, I'm certain.
Thank you.
Any further discussion, any further discussion on the motion? Districts, if you please, call the board.
Counselor King?
No.
Counselor Crowell?
No.
Counselor Vaughn?
Yes.
Counselor Finn?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Yang?
No.
Counselor Palucci?
Yes.
Counselor Hughes?
Yes.
Chairman Hars?
Yes.
That's a 6 to 3. With that, I am going to call the council ordinance committee.